...made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA ten colon four day six et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Masarella.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Chairman Iraquane.
Present.
Our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Okay, so, um, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion made.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Right, you're on record.
You did?
Yep.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA ten colon four day six et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Masarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Chairman Iraquane.
Present.
Also, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz, and our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Present. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as you are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, got you, all right.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lemanowicz, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that any testimony you give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, at this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Here, none seen, none. We have some resolutions. Amin, Berkowitz, Grignani, Jaskiewicz, Masarella, Reddy. Someone want to move that application?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Masarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Royal Coachmen Berkowitz, Grignani, Petty, Reddy, Iraquane. Someone move that?
So moved.
Second, Grignani.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Iraquane.
Yes. Uh, IAAT billboard sign, Berkowitz, Petty, Reddy, and Iraquane. Someone move that?
Application twenty-three colon so moved.
Second. What's your second name?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Iraquane.
Yes. Okay, we have correspondence from... Why don't I have all these? Is that it, you guys? No, I'm just...
No, I got, I got...
You got one. We have correspondence from Mr. O'Neill about Temple Betam, uh, asking to, uh, have the twenty-four twelve carried to May twenty-second without further notice and whatever, he gives this extension through May thirty-first. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Is it May twenty-second?
May thirty-first. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, May twentieth. Okay. So... It looks like the first application twenty-three...
There's another correspondence.
What's that one? Oh, I'm sorry. There was two letters? Yeah, two letters. Yeah. Okay, so we also have one for IAAT Services carrying that to May eighth. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That's why there were two letters. So we are down to one application, application twenty-three colon oh-two Perfect Clicks LLC, three fifty-four Kingston Road, C slash D variance to construct the sign.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Rubin. I represent the applicant. It's a D variance. Let me explain why it's a D variance. There was a previous D variance granted for this site in nineteen eighty-seven, which allowed a limousine company to operate out of there for office and limousine storage. My client purchased the property and, um, actually with knowledge of those, of that resolution, my man was told that his office use, which is a web design business, was a substantially different use and thus needed a use variance to operate.
Hold the microphone a little bit closer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Having said that, it appears that we only have five voting members tonight. Is that correct?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six?
You got six.
Okay.
If, if, if you think you need a seventh after we've heard the testimony...
Fair enough.
We'll just carry the case and, and have someone listen to the tape.
Fair enough. Then we're ready to go.
So you don't need any Cs?
No, we need a C for the sign.
Okay.
That, only for the sign.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But I, I wanted to focus on the D just from a jurisdictional and member, um...
Understood.
...point of view. So, I'm going to call the sole member of the LLC, the owner of the property, as well as the sole member of the LLC, that is, the tenant, and I'm going to introduce him as Chad Agrawal, but I believe his, yes, please sit down, I believe his name is different. I know he needs to be sworn in.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Chad Agrawal, A-G-R-A-W-A-L.
Okay, will be sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agrawal, what is your relationship to the owner of the property, Perfect Realty LLC?
Uh, I'm the single owner of Perfect Real Estate LLC.
And what is your relationship to the applicant, Perfect Clicks LLC?
I'm the, uh, single owner of Perfect Clicks LLC, started the business, uh, ten years ago, I'll be eleven years in May, and, uh...
When did Perfect Real Estate purchase the property?
Perfect Real Estate purchased the property in April of twenty twenty-one.
And was the purpose for, um, granting a tenancy to Perfect Clicks, you bought it to be occupied by Perfect Clicks, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, so owner occupied.
Right.
For the business.
What, what, what business is Perfect Clicks in?
Perfect Clicks is a web development SEO business, uh, that's what we started out as, and, and we do full-service digital marketing, so we're a digital marketing agency.
What is SEO?
SEO is, uh, search engine optimization. I've, uh, kind of made my living marketing, uh, websites on Google and writing really high-quality content over the last ten years. I've made every mistake in the book in terms of developing all that kind of stuff, and I'm the kind of guy who really just does his work himself. I enjoy what I do, and I work very hard at it, and kind of try to let my work speak for itself, so SEO is, is really what I am most passionate about.
Prior to purchasing the property, did you do any due diligence to determine whether your use would be permitted?
Yes, um, prior to purchasing the property, um, I did significant amount of research because I was pretty much staking, um, a lot of what I made all of the years to, um, to buy this property and to solidify my business in, um, in Parsippany. So we, at that time, we were in Landex Plaza, and our building was, uh, being demolished. Uh, we were in three hundred and X Plaza, and we were informed that we were to leave, uh, quickly. And so, um, what we did was, uh, I, I did a lot of research, and I read a resolution that said, you know, that specifically said, I believe it's eighty-six ninety-six, or I have the exact one, the number, eighty-nine sixty-nine, and, uh, when I read that, you know, it said it would be suitable for business office use, and, uh, the previous business was using it as an office and dispatching location for the limousine business, so, and what I read and understood was that it was the office use.
I believe I submitted these resolutions with the application, but if anyone doesn't have them, I have extra copies. Now, you retained Marucci Engineering Associates to do a survey of the property, um, once you were, it was explained to you that you needed to come in and get a use variance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, and... Is this the, um, survey and variance exhibit that he prepared?
Yes, that's correct.
And does this accurately represent the property as you purchased it?
Yes.
And does it accurately represent the property as it is today?
Yes.
Except the survey doesn't show the sign, correct? Oh, yes, the sign is on there. I'm sorry, it is on there. I apologize.
Is that part of the package, that document?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been submitted, that document?
Yes, this document was submitted. Does everyone have this document?
Yes.
Okay. And do you mark documents that was...
Not, not ones that have already been submitted.
Great, thank you. Now, the sign's a little bit over the property line, correct?
That's correct.
Now, we're going to get to the sign later, but let, we'll, let's just acknowledge that it's there, that you put it up, and we're going to talk about that. Okay. Now, you submitted a, um, an addendum to the board that was requested by Mr. Chadwick to describe the nature of your business. Did that accurately represent the nature of your business?
Yes.
How many pl- employees do you have?
Currently, we have three employees.
And do they all work at the site every day?
Yes, and, uh, hopefully, you know, we have, uh, you know, with Parsippany High School, we'll have a fourth, you know, car coming in, uh, we're doing an internship program with them this year, paid internship too, so, that'll be good.
So, do you have any anticipation that you're going to be hiring employees in the, let's say, the near future, let's say, the next year or two?
For right now, it's kind of status quo. Um, I'm really focused on what I'm doing well. I have another manager that's, you know, been with me for four-plus years. He actually also went to Parsippany High School. Um, I met him while we were in Landex, he was a great hire. I've had a big team before, and it's not great, it's a little bit tough, um, so I, I prefer to kind of keep it where it's at right now for the foreseeable future, um, but like any business, I would hope to grow, but right now, uh, we're, we're okay with where we're at.
And the pla- and, and this location can accommodate that growth, given the interior layout as well as the amount of parking that's on the site, correct?
Yeah, for sure.
And there are nine-strike parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
And currently, there are only three people who come to the office every day, correct?
That's correct.
Um, how, how often do you get visits from clients or customers?
Uh, once a month, maybe, um, if that, uh, you know, very infrequent visits from clients, mostly, most of our work is done online, and I'll, I'll go out to a lot of, you know, if, if there's a client, I'm usually going onsite if I want to take a video or something like that.
How often do you get deliveries?
Just like a regular Amazon package, uh, you know, if I'm getting like regular stuff, but nothing, nothing like a business delivery. I, I don't have any equipment or anything like that. We're, I have monitors, that's about, that's my extent of my equipment.
You don't sell products out of the site, right? You sell services.
Services, that's right, ser- yeah, that's right.
Everything you do is in front of a keyboard, correct?
Yes, that's, that's...
That's why you're reading from your phone instead of the paper I put in front of you, correct?
Yes. This is real FaceTime for me.
All right, now let's, let's talk about the sign. How, let's, first of all, let's talk about the dimensions of the sign.
Okay.
Um, how large is the sign from, let's just first talk about the sign phase.
Sure.
How wide is it and how high is it?
So the, the sign, the surface of the sign is, uh, sixty-four inches wide and, um, fifty-two inches high, uh, fifty-two inches in, in height.
So about twenty-three square feet?
Correct.
And if you, if you add the posts to the width, how, how wide does that become?
Uh, with, with, including the posts, it does not exceed, uh, six feet in width, so it's, um, the total square feet for that would be, uh, twenty-six square feet if you take with the six feet width.
And... Why did you put up the sign?
Like any person who bought a building and it's your business, I mean, I was very excited to have a sign, um, and, uh, I, I looked up, you know, kind of what the, what I thought the B four rules were, and, uh, and so I think the standard, or the, the thing was the twenty-four square feet in surface area of the sign and ten feet setback. I did count the ten feet wrong from, I just didn't know, and I did it from the curb instead of the, the way, and I just, I didn't know that, but I, I actually left more room than I, what I thought was the ten feet. Again, somebody who does everything themselves, I'm sorry.
So would you be willing to ask Mr. Marucci to come out and plot on the lot where ten feet is back from the lot line, and you would put the outside portion of the post at that ten-foot marker?
Yes, I, I'm happy to, uh, work with the board to do whatever they see fit and to move the sign and, you know, do that.
Let me, let me ask you a question. The, it's pretty clear up and down that street, if you're fifteen feet from the curb, you don't need a variance.
Yeah.
Ten feet is just gets you to your property line, supposed to be five feet off the, off the property line. So you're, you're right now, you're more than ten feet from the road, you said. Can't be though, because it's...
No, he's not more, he, the, 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 the sign actually crosses the, encroaches into the right way.
Right, but I thought he said he measured from the curb, and he knew it was supposed to be ten feet. But if you, if you're going to lift and pick the sign up out of the ground and move it back, you, if you move it, you got to do it. Does it make any difference whether it's ten feet off the road or fifteen feet?
I don't want to answer for him, but I'm just going to say the, the, the building is twenty and a half feet, the front yard setback for the building is twenty and a half feet, and there's a, probably a three-foot walkway in front, so that leaves seventeen and a half feet...
Right.
...as a setback from the walkway. I think if he goes, if he moves the, the sign fifteen back, the sign is how many feet wide? It's going to be on this, it's going to be on the walkway. That's the problem.
Twenty feet measures to his property line, not to the edge of the curb.
Oh, you're saying measured, how, fifteen feet from the...
Five feet in from your property line.
Oh, fifteen feet back. Fifteen feet from the curb?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll do that. I, I didn't understand, I think he...
So now you don't have a variance.
Okay.
Good, good, got one out. Way to go, John.
So five, if it is twenty-two under feet, it will be like almost you've got seven under feet from your property.
Yeah, it, it'll be good, it'll, it'll be away from the building, most importantly, so it's visible, if it's going to have it, might as well be visible. There's a bush there that's close to the walkway that would block it if we put it in the quarter certain ground.
So we got agreement on that?
Yeah, five feet.
Five feet from the property line.
Five feet from the property line. So... I don't have any more questions for the witness.
Is any variance for the size of the sign? Or the fact that, the, the fact that there's a sign in the...
Well, it's now a residential zone.
Yeah.
So, there's no... Yeah, he does. Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
He used the B four standard as his basis, which he compiles with, but we're now in a residential zone.
So he needs a variance for a sign in a residential zone as well?
For commercial sign.
Commercial sign in a residential zone.
Is that a D or a C?
C.
C.
And, you know, there are commercial signs permitted in the residential zone, and we have a planner here, Paul Ricky, who will testify at, um, but not for this particular business.
But the size is okay, John.
All right. Okay. I have no further questions for this.
Any questions of the witness? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none seen.
Thank you. I'm going to call Paul Ricky, a licensed professional planner.
Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Can you state your name and spell your last name, please?
It's Paul Ricky, R-I-C-C-I. Mr. Ricky, can you give the board instant, can you give the board benefit of your, uh, educational professional background? Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year two thousand. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning that I received in nineteen ninety-seven from Rutgers University. I'm currently a planning consultant to six or seven towns. Um, I've testified in front of, uh, this board and the planning board, I've been qualified in over two hundred and fifty towns throughout the state. And your license is current? It is. I ask that he be qualified as a professional planner?
He is so qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Ricky, were you retained by the applicant to do a planning, uh, review of this application? I was. And tell us what you did to prepare for your testimony. Um, I reviewed the submission application, the, uh, the survey, I, I visited the subject property, uh, reviewed your, your two thousand and twenty master plan, I reviewed pertinent sections of your zoning code. I did prepare an exhibit just to kind of help orient the board to the site. Exhibit is entitled, maybe, uh, qualified now, is that, is that okay?
Sure, just tell us what it is, we'll mark it A one. You have copies?
Uh, I do. And it's entitled Exhibit One, uh, aerial, aerial in existing commercial properties, three fifty-four Kingston Road area, Parsippany, Troy Hills, New Jersey. Just quickly, this is prepared in a geographic information system. The most recent aerial in that system that can be overlaid is from two thousand and twenty. It shows the subject property outlined in orange, and the, the purpose of this was to show, uh, some, some other existing commercial activity in the area, and also, I just wanted to say, well, I'm, I'll, I'll talk about this through my testimony, but, um, this area of Parsipony along Kingston Road was historically zoned in your, your business four district. I'm not sure if the board recognized that, uh, and that's why, um, there's proliferation of, of commercial uses, uh, in this area. It's since been, this portion of the roadway has since been, uh, rezoned to the residential four district. When the use variance was granted back in nineteen, was it seventy-eight, eighty-seven, excuse me, um, the office use was a permitted use in the district. The reason that the use variance was required back then was because the limousine portion of the business, the storage of the vehicles, was considered outdoor storage, and your B four district today continues to permit office uses, both professional office, medical offices, uh, and the like. So, um, you know, it's an area that, you know, so the, in, in my opinion, like, the office function of this property, it, it largely became non-conforming as a result of that, of that ordinance change per se, because it, it really was a permitted use at, at one time.
I remember an application, um, just a little bit closer to Littleton Road where, um, a gentleman had a house and a lot next door, and he parked his garbage trucks, and you couldn't have the garbage trucks in the house on the same lot, and they had to come for a variance to do that.
Okay.
That was a long time ago.
Didn't they try to put a cell tower in there?
Yes, yes, right on, on number one. On number one, they tried to put a cell tower.
I mean, I, I know the board's aware of the criteria, I'm going to show that the, the uses of the property is particularly well-suited for the use, for that reason it promotes the general welfare, and that these variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good in impairing, uh, your zone plan. From a strict perspective, uh, this is one of, if not one of the best use variance applications I've seen. That's largely based on the, the context and condition of this property. I looked at, uh, Google Street View, uh, going back to two thousand and twelve, and, um, there was anywhere from nine limousines being stored out here, some of them were the van-style limousines as well and cars. Here, you heard from the applicant, if, if there's an existing building that's been converted to office space with a commercial parking lot, it's, it's a, this is a business site today, and I could not think of, in an area, as you see on the aerial that is surrounded by single-family residential homes, I can see of no better use for this property, a property that no longer maintains residential characteristics, it's office space inside, than to low, than to locate a low-intensity office use at this site, and where an individual may have, you know, a monthly or bimonthly visitor by a customer, uh, individuals, three or four individuals that come to the site each day, they know where they're going, you know, they park their car, uh, and, and they leave at night, so the, the hours of operation are, are limited, uh, as well. When, when the use variance was granted, the limousine business, according to the resolution, had twenty-two full-time drivers and twenty to twenty-five part-time drivers, and they, it indicated that eight limousines would be stored on-site. I saw evidence, at least visually, that more was occurring.
They had big vehicles.
Yeah.
That, that company had big vehicles.
Um, and prior to that, based on the resolution, the prior use of the property, uh, was for a, a, a business that stored drilling rigs, equipment, and trucks. So, the, the progression here is for lower intensity over time, which is, in my opinion, is, uh, highly, uh, desirable, and here, there'll be no outdoor storage associated with the business. That function would be eliminated, uh, as part of this application. Again, it's an existing office space today, it's relatively modest an area, I think it's thirteen hundred and twenty, I won't give the wrong number, it's thirteen hundred and twenty-five point four square feet in area, and there's nine parking spaces, uh, associated with the lot. If you are for a zone, it's oversized as well, it's a ten thousand square foot lot where six thousand, uh, square feet is required, and your master plan even speaks to this area, you know, maybe read a, a quick blurb, but it recognizes the appropriateness of, of residential mixed with commercial in, in this area of the town as well, and it's on page twenty, one twenty-five, it says the neighborhood commercial land use designation corresponds to the B four zoning district, and it's found along Kingston Road in the intersection of Lobo and Halsey Roads, Lake Parsipony, and, um, but it, it, when it goes on and it talks about this, there's, I'll just read that area then. There are areas are similar to Lake Hiwatha Business District in that they are characterized by small-scale retail and service uses, or they're somewhat less defined, business districts that are also contained scattered single-family homes, and it, it goes on, but what, what it says is that it recognizes that this area, uh, in addition to single-family or small-scale mixed-use development, is appropriate to be interspersed with commercial areas, and, uh, it's not exactly for this exact site, but it does speak to the appropriateness of, uh, the mix of those uses. Because, uh, this is a commercial site, it's already been, uh, converted to office space, uh, sometime, and the applicant is, is, is looking to lower the intensity here. Again, I think the site is, meets purpose A, the municipal land use law, because it's, uh, particularly well-suited for the use, it promotes the general welfare, and also purpose G, it provides sufficient space, needs, the needs of, uh, commercial uses for New Jersey citizens. Regarding the negative criteria, uh, I think I've, I've kind of discussed that this is a site that is operated at a, a much higher intensity. There's no reason, as a planner, and I, I represent boards, to anticipate that there'll be no new negative impacts associated with this application, particularly since that outdoor storage of vehicles and, and past outdoor storage is being generated. Uh, there's no changes proposed, uh, to the site or the, the, the building itself, um, with the exception of the sign that we'll talk about. Uh, it's a low-traffic generator, it's a low generator of waste, and the waste that there is, it's paper-type waste, um, um, and there is sufficient space here clearly, is, it's paper-type waste, and there is sufficient space here clearly for the use, again, in terms of your zone plan, this was a B4 district, it was, the portion of the site that remains is office, and that nonconformity came as a result of an ordinance change, so this is not a substantial departure for your zone plan, in terms of existing nonconforming conditions, the applicant was hoping to have those granted as well, those relate to the building itself, the front yard setback of 20.5 feet where 25 feet exists, no change proposed, one side yard setback of 5.2 feet where 6 feet is required, accessory building side yard setback of 1.9 feet where 6 feet is required, and accessory building rear yard setback of 7.5 feet where 10 feet is required, and there's a maximum lot coverage of 73.9%, which remains unchanged, under the C1 criteria, the law is clear, and it says that, under 70C1C, by reason of extraordinary exceptional situation uniquely affecting the specific piece of property, where the structure is lawfully existing thereon, the strict application of regulation, it goes on, will result in undue or particular hardship, will result in exceptional and undue hardship, the developer sets priority grant upon an application, it goes on, says that it's appropriate in that regard, so, these are legal nonconforming conditions that aren't being changed, we believe we should be entitled to that C1 hardship, regarding the sign, I heard what Mr. Chadwick said, he recommended moving the sign, I think, five feet from the front property line, and just to overall understand what your zoning allows, I mean, it's a residential district, so, it doesn't allow signs really associated with a residential home, with the exception of maybe a small, very small identification of that home, in the residential districts, you have parks, four parks, it recognizes their appropriate standard of 20 square feet, and setback 10 feet from the property line, and then, in the B4 zone, it anticipates up to 25 square feet, setback 15 feet, so, it's my position as a planner that the size of the sign is appropriately scaled based on standards that already exist in the ordinance today, and it can be set back in a manner, as suggested by Mr. Chadwick, the signs out there, if you saw it, we don't believe it would be a substantial detriment to the zone plan, all in all, I think this is a very good application, one that brings a low-intensity use into a building that really has no other function today than a business, and what is better in a single-family residential neighborhood that has a computer-based business, so, it's a really good application, in my opinion.
I have no further questions? Questions, I suppose, by the board?
What's up, office? Did you mention the hours of operation?
Hours of operation?
As soon as it's done, you're talking to Mike.
Hours of operation are 8:30 a.m. to about 5:00 p.m.
Lighting, nighttime illumination, or anything on the sign?
There's no illumination on the sign, there was on the old sign, he removed it.
Any other questions? Yes, I was just going to give you an opportunity right now, any member of the public have any questions of this witness, please come forward. Nato, you got to identify yourself and use the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Hi, Paul Fowley, F A W L I E, 830 Mountain Way, Parsippany, the mail goes to Morris Plains.
My question is, that comes out of the sleeve?
You can, yeah.
Take it out of the sleeve, so you know, you're back.
Hey, my question, now I'm ready, my question is, is there a limitation on if the sign were illuminated, or is there a limitation on how long it can be illuminated into the night?
It's not going to be, that will be part of the resolution.
But if it were?
It's kind of an open-ended question, if he asked for, you know, 5 o'clock at night to 11 o'clock at night, or all night, or.
So, there's no existing policy regarding that? It's, each case is treated differently?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness? I hear none on the scene.
I have no further witnesses. I have just two brief comments, if I may, and then, I have no closing.
Let me just see if there's any people who want to speak in support of, or, are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application, I hear none on the scene, go ahead.
Thank you, I don't really think I need to answer the testimony, I just have two points to make, the variance for the existing conditions is, would allow the applicant to rebuild the principal building, the same location that it currently exists, without those variances, nonconforming conditions, should there be a fire, he could, he would need a variance to rebuild anyway, so, the idea is that he could then more readily continue his business, get the fire, and get the insurance, and total destruction means you cannot build nonconforming conditions, if you have a variance, you can, it runs with the law, that's why that's requested, as to the D variance, and I'll refer to Mr. Johnson, it's my understanding that if this variance is granted, the variance for the limousine business will be deemed abandoned by law, unless it cannot return, unless it comes back to this board for a new variance, but currently, a limousine business could walk in there tomorrow and use that variance because it runs with the law, that's it, I have nothing further to say, thank you.
We need to go into conference? Someone like to make a statement as to why we should approve this?
Yeah, this is a reasonable request, the applicant is carrying the business for 10 years, and he bought the building, and he wants to continue the business, and all he needs is the signage, so, it is a minimum request, I'm in favor of it.
So, someone firm a resolution?
Yeah, I'll move, application 2302, Perfect Clicks, I move we grant the D variance for the business that was described, C variances that were requested, and the variance for the sign, actually, he doesn't need that now, because he's going to move it to five feet from the property line.
He needs a variance for a business sign in a residential district, so.
He needs a variance for the business sign in the residential district, that's part of my motion to approve.
Second, are you?
Any discussion, Nora Colerall?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ragnani.
Yes.
Mizarella.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. So, the variance is granted?
Great, thank you, have a nice evening, everyone.
Try to get it done by the next meeting, if not, the meeting after that.
May 22nd.
Nice presentation, Mr. Ruben, very nice presentation. Obviously, you've done this before.
On all sides, actually, that side, this side, and objecting.
Motion to adjourn? Any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I thought we'd be here all night.
I looked at that agenda, yeah.